Good evening and welcome to the January 9th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you that are with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are watching from home. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we have three young people to lead us in our pledge. Knox Wright, a first grade student at Overall Creek; JD Wright, a second grade student at Overall Creek; and also Macy Miffleton, a fifth grade student at Northfield. Followed then by a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to recognize that two of those young ones are sons of my colleague on city council, Sean Wright.
All right, Sean, we're glad to have you. Come back more often and keep Bill in line.
It takes village.
All right, members of the board, you have seen a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications. Ms. Trejo?
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Got a few things to cover with you tonight. First of all, I want to just remind everyone that Discovery Schools' final informational meeting is this Thursday night, January 11th, at 6:00 p.m. Applications for Discovery School are due at the end of January. All the information can be found on their website. The City Schools Foundation will also be distributing $35,000 in parity grants this month. The foundation is very happy to announce that the honorees for excellence in education will be Andy and Cherry Womack. We're excited to honor them on our Excellence in Education on April 26th, which will be at Copper Ridge. Candle Wishes has partnered with MCS to provide birthday assistance for 75 MCS families. Candle Wishes provides a free birthday celebration and gifts for children in need. So that's always a fun time to be around. Congratulations to Case and Lane's Dr. St. John and Dr. Owens for winning the Agriculture in the Classroom Outstanding Teachers Award. In addition to all the accolades they're going to receive, they also get sent to a trip, it's a National Farm Bureau trip, to Utah to learn more about ag in the classroom. So congratulations, Case and Lane, on that. Case and Lane Pre-K would like to thank Chewies and the manager, Sam Duncan, for their donation of items for their housekeeping centers. And the John Pittard family would like to thank the Tennessee Titan, Jeffrey Simmons, and Give 'Em a Reason Foundation for donating new shoes to all students. They also spent time, took pictures. It was a great night. It was right before, between Thanksgiving and that Christmas, just an absolutely fabulous night to come together. They had a lot of other people helping them as well. Yolanda Gray Ruffin, Destiny Center, Liberty Station, and Highway 231 are a few of those people that were helping out that night. Additionally, Highway 231 has adopted John Pittard, and they are providing breakfast and snacks to their faculty. So we love those community partners. Thank you to Kim Wilson and friends, the Murfreesboro Fire Department, and First Presbyterian Church for their food drives and their food donations to our backpack program. Those came in a very timely, over the last four weeks, so we are ready for this new season in front of us, and we appreciate them and all that they did. Overall Creek will be hosting the Storybook Breakfast benefiting the Imagination Library on Saturday, February 3rd. That is part of the United Way, so if you want more details about that, you can go to the United Ways page and find out about Storybook Breakfast. Safety Week is scheduled for the week of January 22nd. If you remember, the beginning of this school year, we had a safety week. We'll have another one for the spring. We want to make sure all parents know that if they see lots of police and fire trucks outside of our schools that we are just practicing. So, and we'll be sending letters out to families for that. And then finally, I want to say just thank you to the many faith-based organizations and nonprofits, the for-profits, just the businesses that came together over the holidays to make sure that our children were taken care of. They received lots of nice gifts, and also several received meals. So we appreciate all those partnerships and all that we are able to accomplish because of them. That is it, sir. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Duke.
Thank you, Dr. Duke.
All right, good evening, board. I am pleased, I'm going to ask Mr. Daniel Owens to come up to the podium. I am pleased to introduce formally to the board our new finance director. As the board is aware, Ms. Williams retired in December, and we are thrilled to welcome Mr. Owens to our team to continue to lead our finance department as they work to support our students in our schools. Mr. Owens comes to us from a role as the Director of Business Operations for TCAT, which is the Tennessee College of Applied Technology. His duties covered both the Murfreesboro and Smyrna campus. As a member of their senior staff, he reported directly to the president of TCAT, where he prepared and oversaw their budgeting, completed all the required reporting, negotiated vendor and facility contracts, oversaw purchasing, and coordinated payroll. One of his previous supervisors described Daniel as a 10 out of 10 in how effectively he completed his duties, the quality of his work, and his ability to collaborate with others. Additionally, he spoke about Daniel's strong ability to navigate issues and bring people together to get the job done. Another employee told us that Daniel was a pillar in their organization and is known for his professionalism and his dependability, and we are thrilled to welcome him to the team. I think this is day three, four?
Day four.
Four, and he's done a great job already, so welcome, Daniel.
Welcome.
On the board, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Duke, and whoever gave those kind words about me. Good evening, board members, and it's an honor to be here to work along Murfreesboro City Schools and to serve the students and families. Thank you.
Thank you. Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Duke, the best of MCS.
Yes, sir. Good evening, board, again, and I am pleased tonight to recognize our first Best of MCS Honoree for 2024, and to publicly thank this employee for their hard work and the commitment they put forward every day to make MCS great. I'm honored to ask Mr. Gary Foltz to join me at the podium. You know, many times when we think about achieving our mission of ensuring the academic and personal success of our students, our thoughts go to the excellent teachers, educational assistants, and school administrators who do Herculean work every day to make learning possible for our students. However, anyone who has ever been in a school understands it's many of the players behind the scenes that also make it possible for us to achieve our goals. And if you don't believe me, just try teaching a room of 20 kindergarteners, or sixth graders for that matter, in August when there is no air conditioner. Mr. Foltz is one of our maintenance technicians, and he plays a critical role in keeping our buildings up and running. He has been with us since April of 2019, and during his time here, he has made a tremendous impact. Mr. Foltz was actually nominated for this recognition by a central office employee who noticed his ongoing great work. She told me that Gary is the most positive, selfless, and kindest person. He is such a hard worker who truly cares about his job performance. He always makes sure that everyone is taken care of in a timely manner. He not only works hard, but he has the best attitude while doing his work. Gary always has a smile. He also communicates with the appropriate staff in the building where he is in the process of doing the job, and employees like Gary make everyone's day so much better. Mr. Williford, our maintenance supervisor, told me that Gary is a fine example of what every employer would love to have as part of their team. He's beyond the term of being a hard worker. His character reflects in the quality of his work and his willingness to help others who may be struggling in the accuracy or troubleshooting issues. We are very lucky to have Mr. Foltz, he says. You know, there are many employees that I get the chance personally to work with that make me proud to be part of the MCS team, and Gary is definitely one of those employees. So, Mr. Foltz, on behalf of the district, let me thank you for the work you've done. Your excellent work and your positive attitude have been noticed by so many, and we want to thank you for representing the best of MCS.
Gosh, I'd just like to say thank you, Dr. Duke. Thank you, board members. This is really unexpected for me, you know, and I'm really honored to, and joyful, to receive this. And, you know, lastly, I just appreciate the opportunity to work for the City Schools, and it's a joy to work for MCS.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, spotlight on education. Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. We have a lot of special guests with us tonight, and I'm going to ask Dr. Kaitlin Bullard, principal of Discovery School, to come up. While many of us were at TSBA, enjoying the TSBA conference over the week before Thanksgiving, many Discovery students were there participating in the state Beta competition, and I'm thrilled to say we have some winners with us here tonight. And so, Dr. Bullard, I'm going to turn it over to you.
We absolutely do. Thank you so much for having us, board. I am so proud of the students standing behind me, and we had another 25 students who weren't able to join us tonight, as well as several sponsors. But we just want to honor the work that these students and their sponsors have put in because it is no small feat to come to this convention and compete against students from across the state. And our students are really able to exemplify the four pillars of Beta, that character, service, leadership, and achievement through that. So I want to recognize our participants who are here with us tonight. I have Caleb Hodge, who won first place in the entire state in creative writing. I have Nora Ballou, our fifth grader. I have Catherine Salter, who won a Language Arts Award statewide. Arribe Mayo. Zaima Badmas. Sarah Omar. Minar Omar. Hope Clemente, who won a Social Studies Award for the state. Addie Biles. Austin Moore, who won a Math Award for the state. Margaret Stewart, who won a Poetry Award. Rowan Scott, who won first place in the entire state for science. And Jake Ribet. So congratulations to all of those.
Wow.
Our students also placed statewide in Song Fest, which every single student who was part of Beta Convention competed in. We are very proud of them for that. And of course, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our amazing sponsors. I have with me tonight Shay Payne, who was our robotics sponsor for Beta. And so we have several other sponsors as well. Jason Page, Beth Warren, have given numerous hours over the course of several years towards this. Dr. Kelly Kleppinger, who sponsors Song Fest, as well as Jen Hickson, who sponsors our engineering competition. And they truly do put in, I mean, 100 hours plus to prepare for this and be able to exemplify those character traits and all of that. So we are so proud of them. I also want to give a special shout out to Ivy Ballou, who's here with us. She's volunteered for many years with Discovery School and also helped sponsor as a non-faculty volunteer. So thank you again for having us this evening to recognize them.
Thank you. Very good. That is wonderful. No wonder people want to come to Murfreesboro City Schools.
Makes sense.
All right, public comment. We don't have anybody in that category tonight. Audit overview.
All right, yes, sir. I am excited to welcome Mr. Jimmy Joe from Job Hastings to come present tonight our FY23 audit. As he makes his way to the podium, I will say to our Discovery School families, thank you so much for being here. You are welcome to stay, but I can assure you the best part of the meeting has concluded. But we will be talking about audit results if you would like to stay. As they're slipping out, as I said recently, the auditing firm Job Hastings officially completed our FY23 audit of our district funds, and I'm excited to welcome Mr. Joe to the podium to provide the board a brief overview of their audit work.
Well, thank you, Dr. Duke, for that inspiring introduction. It's going to be, I already knew it was hard to follow those kids, but, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'm happy to be here to present our audit report for the year. I am a proud graduate of Murfreesboro City Schools myself, having gone to Hobgood. I have two daughters who went through the schools, are grown now, and one of their fine teachers is back here, so I'm proud to be a part of what we can do to help the schools, and I appreciate all your commitment to this inspiring organization.
I will say this, we're proud to have you in the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm going to try to be brief. It might take me just a few minutes to go through. It's an 86-page report, and I'm not going to spend any time on every page, but let me just hit the highlights for you. On page one, which is a letter from us, our letterhead, it's a few pages in, it's the first page that's numbered, that is our annual audit report, and that is a clean or unmodified opinion. It has a lot of words to say that, but it is a clean opinion. There are actually three different opinions that are in this report that are required for a governmental entity. One of those is that one on the overall financial statements. There are two others. One is based on the internal controls overall and the district's or the system's compliance with laws and regulations. That's also a clean report. There's another report that's just based on the federal grant money, federal and state grant money. We're required, as auditors, to look at the compliance on those programs that we receive federal money for. So we go through and test the compliance for those different programs, see that the school system is complying with the regulations, and we found that, again, that's a clean report. There's no findings that are related to the federal dollars there. So that's nothing to point out there. On page four through 15 is an interesting report that is management's discussion and analysis. This is just from management's view, the financial highlights for the year, and certain other information. It's a good summary just to kind of go over what we've seen in the past year as far as financial highlights. Over on page 16, and I do promise I'm going to be brief, I just, there are actually two presentations, and I think it's important to point out a little bit about how this is structured because governmental accounting is pretty complex. One view that the system has is what's called a district-wide view, and that includes all assets and liabilities of the system, which would be things like the school buildings and desks and the bonds that are, you know, due over 30 years. It includes all assets and liabilities, so it's more like a business would present its financial statements. So on page 16, you'll see that presentation, and you'll see for the year, at June 30th, 23, there were total assets in the district, including, like I said, the school buildings and all assets, $191 million. So quite a significant amount of assets. And it also includes all liabilities, which would be bonds that are related to those buildings and long-term debt, and you'll see those presented there under liabilities. Now, the difference between assets and all our liabilities is what's called net position, and that's basically what you would equate to a net worth of an individual or a business. And down at the bottom, you'll see that number is $143 million. So quite a strong position to be in. Now, the other type of presentation is more what you're concerned with on a regular basis, which would be a budget presentation. And that starts on page 18. And what's presented there is, it doesn't include things like school buildings because we can't spend that in next year's budget. It doesn't include what we owe over the next 30 years because we're not going to have to pay it out of the next year's budget. But it does include the short-term assets and liabilities that are important for budgeting purposes. And it's also presented in a fund basis. For instance, we've got the General School Fund, we've got the Federal Programs Fund, we've got the School Nutrition or Cafeteria Fund, and then the Extended School Program, and then several other funds are combined into the last column there. But what's important to point out here is, again, we're looking at a budget basis presentation, and for instance, for the General Purpose Fund, General Purpose School Fund, the fund balance or reserve, in other words, is $24,457,000. So again, a strong position going forward into the next budget year. Combined, which would include, and you keep in mind that federal programs are restricted for federal certain programs, so that fund balance is reserved, but just a combined fund balance of over $41 million at June 30th. So that's, and just to point out one thing on page 20, this is the revenues and expenses, again, on a budget basis. So for the year, the system had total expenditures of over $123 million. So it's become quite a large organization. And I should say that Kim Williams and her staff were great in cooperating with us and giving us everything we needed, and Dr. Duke as well, and I know she's left a good trail to follow, so we feel comfortable that things will be in good hands now, too. Let me just, I mentioned the federal money, and if you go back to page 71, this is a listing of all the federal awards programs and which department, federal department, those funds came from. For the year, there were about $28.5 million in federal funds that came into the system. And then there's a page with state financial assistance, and that's over $55 million. So those are itemized there. In the last two pages, page 84, that's just a summary of our results for the audit. It does say that the opinions are clean, that they're unmodified. It says that there were no findings as far as this year. We didn't have any findings, audit findings, so that's always good news, and it's rather unusual for an organization of this size, too. But I think that's a good summary, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
That's a wonderful report. Do you have, and I know you do this for a lot of systems, do you have those systems that they do have deficiencies?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir. Like I say, it's not unusual for us to have recommendations for a system of any size, and, you know, it's a good thing that there weren't anything of any significance. Now, we don't have to report every little thing, but, and there might be things that we discussed with Kim or just recommendations, but nothing of any significance that needed to be brought to your attention.
Thank you. Good report. Any questions? Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Come back any time with a report like that.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, if I can add, just to personally say again to Job Hastings' team and Molly and the ones that work so hard with our finance department, they spend a lot of time in our office. They do a great job, and I just want to personally thank them for the, they're great to work with as well. So we're really pleased with the report, but we're also just pleased with how great it is to work with them. And, Mr. Chairman, I ought to say, no pressure, Mr. Owens.
I was thinking that.
I'm sure Miss Owens is going to pick up the ball and keep on going like we have been.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Our consent items. Have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, let's move on down to the action items. Approved Policy 2.703, adults, I'm sorry, audits.
Yes, audits. Board Policy 2.703 has been updated to include statutory language detailing the requirements for corrective action planning in the event of audit findings. To reiterate, we will not need this this year, no audit findings, but our staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 2.703 on first reading.
All right. Have a motion to approve the policy?
So moved. So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Have a second?
Second, Mr. [inaudible].
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Board Policy 2.8001.
Board Policy 2.8001 has been updated to reflect administrative changes within the school district. This policy is revised to give the director of schools the discretion to develop and implement a sustainable energy plan for the school district, taking into account the needs of each school. Additionally, because energy conservation is directly related to the operational management of the school district, it is recommended that this policy be reclassified as a Section 3 Operational Policy with the descriptor code 3.209. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to Board Policy 2.8001 on first reading.
Have a motion to approve the changes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment?
This is on first reading. Is this going to get three or two? How does this?
It'll go two.
Two.
It'll go two.
That's it. I just wanted you to know I'm here, but...
I'm not going, never mind. All right, you've had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 2.801.
Board Policy 2.801 is a new policy proposal to comply with the requirements of the Tennessee Internal School Funds Manual for the application and use of credit cards and credit lines by school employees. The staff recommendation would be to approve the adoption of Board Policy 2.801 on first reading. This will require two readings.
Have a motion to accept Policy 2.801, credit cards and credit lines.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye. Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Any question or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy four-point-two-oh-five, magnet schools?
Yes. Board policy four-point-two-zero-five is also a new policy recommendation. It provides clarity on the establishment of magnet schools as open-zone schools of choice based on application and selection criteria established by the director of schools. The staff recommendation would be to approve the adoption of board policy four-point-two-zero-five on first reading, and to clarify, this would not change any current application or selection criteria for discovery school at this time.
Have a motion to approve policy four-point-two-oh-five, magnet schools?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment?
Do we have a sibling policy in that?
We do. There is a sibling policy. And, Dr. Bullard, do you want to briefly just tell the board, uh, what that sibling policy is?
The sibling policy is in the administrative directive, and it essentially covers, um, siblings of currently enrolled students who are able to perform at the academic band and ranks them by order within that.
Okay. Thank you.
We have a motion to approve policy four-point-two-oh-five, magnet schools?
I think we got it out.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy six-point-seven-oh-two, fundraising activities?
Schoolsponsored fundraising activities are allowed by state law, and requirements for fundraising activities are provided by guidelines established in the Tennessee Internal School Funds Manual. Given the financial nature of fundraising requirements, it is recommended that this policy be reclassified to the fiscal management policy section, section two, with the descriptor code two-point-six-zero-one. Additionally, several changes were made to school-sponsored fundraising requirements in the most recent version of the Tennessee Internal School Funds Manual, and those updates are reflected in the edits proposed in this version of policy six-point-seven-zero-two. The recommendation from our staff is to approve changes to board policy six-point-seven-zero-two on first reading.
Have a motion to approve the change?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? Mr. Settles?
So, what I'm noticing is mostly the definitions have been struck out. Is that just it?
That's right. So, they took, uh, they took out, in the most recent version of Internal School Funds Manual, they took out the active versus passive fundraising. Um, and that's just to clarify those definitions. It, all fundraisers that are raising funds involving students are going to be considered fundraisers under the, the new manual. So, there's not an active.
I remember having a lot of discussion about what is active and what is not when we first, well, I don't remember this one. So, we're not really making a distinction between active and passive?
That's correct.
It's just a fundraiser?
Just a fundraiser if it involves students.
Okay.
If I can't add, the policy does specify on line ten, again, that every school is limited to four. That occurred during the school day, which is prior, what was that active piece? So, that number hasn't changed, just the, the terminology has gone away.
Thank you. I'm ready to vote.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Budget amendment?
Uh, good evening. Again, we have several board, uh, budget amendments we're going to bring tonight. Several of these are recognizing some new funds, which will also need to go to our city council for approval. The first is, um, for, to amend for Artisa growth funds. Tennessee school districts that, districts that experience current-year growth in the TISA allocation generated by students in the district of excess of one-point-two-five percent as compared to the prior year are eligible for a fast-growth stipend. In November, where we were, received notification that we did qualify to receive the TISA fa, fast-growth stipend, and we are recommending to budget this two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of these funds to a previously-approved school safety and security project.
Have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd and Ms. Long. Any question or comment?
Is this reoccurring?
So, it's calculated annually. Because of the way the TISA funding works, the money we have this year is based off of last year's enrollment. So, what they do in the fall of every year is they rerun the numbers with current-year enrollment. If you're above that one-point-two-five percent, then you're eligible to receive extra funding because this, the student count, or I shouldn't say student count, the TISA allocation changed. And I think that's an important kind of way of thinking. It's different than TISA. Under BEP, it was headcount, you know, if the number of students changed. Of course, what we know now under TISA is students generate different amounts of money based on the services they receive, based on, um, different classifications they may have. And so, in this situation, when they calculate fast-growth funds, they're not looking at the number of students, but they're really looking at the total amount of services that's generating the funding. And so, if the generation of funding is above that one-point-two-five percent, that could be, for instance, if you had an influx, uh, or a high number of English-language learners that came into the school district, they receive some extra funding to meet those services, so that could put you over that one-point-two-five percent. So, it is recurring funding.
If we meet the standards.
It's just to what amount we may get on a year-by-year basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Budget amendment, F, GPS transfer?
Last spring, the board approved several school safety projects in the FY-24 general purpose schools budget. The budget amendment transfers previously-approved funds in our maintenance major budget category to align with the public school safety grant budget. In addition to the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in new TISA growth funds we just approved, this transfer will fully fund one of the approved projects ahead of schedule instead of spreading it out over multiple years. So, we are recommending to move ninety-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars from the maintenance and repair buildings line item to the other equipment line item within the same major budget category.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Budget amendment on fund, ESP fund balance?
This amendment budgets a hundred-and-ninety-four thousand from the audited ESP fund balance to recognize additional FY-24 expenditures and other capital outlay to fund a new playground at Mitchell Nielsen Elementary. This is a one-time capital expenditure needed to cover the cost of the expanded scope of work and the shade cover. This project was approved by the board as part of the five-year plan. I do want to specify that a hundred-and-ninety-four thousand is not the total cost of the project, just the amount we need to move to, uh, finish fully funding that. Uh, and we are recommending approval of the amendment.
We have a motion to approve the budget amendment?
So.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. And any question or comment? See none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of contract, Mitchell Nielsen Elementary Playground?
Yes. Uh, to go along with the budget amendment that was just approved, the purchasing departments of Murfreesboro City solicited and received bids on behalf of the school system for the demolition of the existing playground at Mitchell Nielsen Elementary and construction of a new playground at Mitchell Nielsen. Bid responses were reviewed by the purchasing department in Murfreesboro City and project development departments, Johnson and Bailey Architects, and our Murfreesboro City Schools team. Voice Ballard Construction was the sole bidder for the project. The contract sum is five-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand dollars, which also includes, uh, fabric shade structures within the cost. And we are recommending approval of the contract for the Mitchell Nielsen Playground.
Have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dodd. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Any question or comment?
When are they getting started?
Uh, Mr. Barch, I'll turn the timeline over to you.
And I only ask because this is one of those projects that, that I remember from way back, too. So, I'm excited. And I want to go on the playground if they make it, you know.
It'll be fun.
Can I?
Yeah, it'll be fun.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be great. Good evening.
Good evening.
The, uh...
I'll see you on the slide, too.
I'm planning. That was what I was thinking of.
State of the, state of the art. State of the art. Um, the, as soon as we get the contract signed, and then it's four to six weeks to procure, uh, the playground equipment. And then it's relatively quick, but they still have eighty-one days to complete from when they get the materials. So, we're looking mid-May to mid-June as a completion. And they're not tearing up the existing playground that's out there by the roads. That's after. When they complete the new playground, then they go and are going to tear down the existing playground, and we're going to use some of that, uh, in various locations in the district.
Very good.
What part of campus is the new one going in?
Uh, it's on a grassy knoll in the back. It's, you know where the, the tennis court is in the back? It's up on that hill.
Okay.
Uh, we were going down lower first, and then the city thought we'd have some drainage issues. So, now it's going to be fantastic.
Yeah.
It will be extremely, a lot more safer than where the current playground is.
Yeah, yeah.
Does this, uh, is there anything in here for the primary school?
Not, not, no, sir.
I will point, we did add, um, we do have, I think, two structures at the primary school, and I do believe the one that are newer, the current structure at the elementary, I don't want to say it's original to the building, but it's got to be pretty close.
Tell us, because that's where you went.
What?
I think he's asking if you played on that same.
Did you play on the original playground?
I, I can confirm that I played on the original playground.
Original playground for Mitchell Nielsen Elementary was not where it is today.
Okay.
It was located on the east end of the building. You know where you go up in there? Is it Circle Drive? The playground was all back in there. Went all the way back to the, to the woods, and then there was a trail in the woods, and, uh-oh.
Oh.
I'm not going any further. Grapevine and all the others, too.
Wow.
That was over near the outhouses, wasn't it?
No, they weren't there anymore. They were, they're torn down. Uh, reason I ask that is, I know they're concerned about fences at the elementary, at the primary school.
Uh, fence around the, I'm, I'm...
The backside going into the wooded area?
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, that, the, there'll be a fence around this playground. But as far as fencing off the whole, uh, the acreage there by the, by the woods, that has not been discussed yet.
Uh, I was talking about it's primary, not the general.
Okay, yeah, the, that has not been discussed lately.
Okay.
We'll look into that, though.
Yes.
Well, I'll, we'll come back, and let me get with Mr. Williford and Don on, on that, and we will come back with that on the fencing on the primary. But I do want to point out that, um, Ms. Bush said she did play on the current playground when she was at Mitchell Nielsen.
Wow.
Played on the playground that's there now?
Yes. We've been there for a while.
We've updated the slide.
Not, not last week.
Not last, see, I was thinking, yeah, a while back.
I'll give you a little hint of the original playground. A lot of that equipment came from what we call the neighborhood park. It's corner of Grantland and Clark Boulevard, right there on that curve. Because the men in the neighborhood owned that lot, and they provided, we had a slide, America around, there for other things as well. And then when the school was built, that equipment was donated to the school. So, that was the first playground for the school.
That is.
But anyway, that is your history lesson for today. All right, we've had a motion and a discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Just one follow-up question. The five-ninety-four, five-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand for the, for the cost of this is, um, the previous hundred-and-ninety-four thousand that we just approved, that was inclusive of this?
Yes, sir.
That's, we're building up to the, pay for the five-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand. Okay. When I read that number, I just had complete sticker shock on, on the cost of a playground.
And it's all...
I'm in the wrong business.
Well, and it's, it's not just the equipment, obviously, it's the installation, it's the prep for the network. I will say, when we, if, I know it's been several months that you looked at it, and we presented the five-year plan, including this, the original price we were looking at was closer to seven-hundred thousand. So, uh, we're, we're pleased to see the five-ninety-four.
Well, I'm just glad that, uh, supply chain is not the issue anymore. That was such a burden. I'm, oh, God. So, glad everything's moving, because, and when I was asking about that, and he said, oh, it takes this long to get the equipment, I, I, I was in the dream world, because that's really good.
All right, we have approval of a contract with GHA Technologies.
Uh, yes, sir. MCS is seeking to enter into a cooperative purchasing, purchasing agreement with GHA Technologies for the purchase of audiovisual equipment, including Promethium interactive displays. State statute allows local governments to participate in cooperative purchasing agreements for the procurement of supplies and services. The cooperative agreement submitted to the board for approval would allow the school system to purchase audio and visual products at the same price under a, a similar contract. The purchases are generally made at the individual school level, with the school providing the funding source of these materials. However, the cost of the equipment purchases will exceed fifty thousand dollars collectively, but they will align with the budgets for each school, and we are recommending approval of the cooperative purchasing agreement.
We have a motion to approve the contract with GHA.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of contract, J and B Professional Services?
We are very excited tonight to present John, to present to you that Johnson and Bailey Architects have submitted a proposal for the architectural services for the administrative addition at Reeves Rogers Elementary School. This project will consist of four thousand, of a four-thousand-square-foot addition, a six-hundred-square-foot renovation, a new exterior entrance, entrance canopy, and aesthetic improvements to the existing building. These modifications will provide a secure access entry point to the school and provide upgrades for the administrative and student support teams. The proposal from Johnson and Bailey includes a schematic floor plan, which is part of your packet, the project schedule, and the construction budget. We are recommending approval of the contract with a projected construction cost of two-million-one-hundred-thirty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. The total fee proposed for architectural services is a hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen dollars, with supplemental architectural services provided as needed on an hourly basis pursuant to the fee scheduled outlined in the agreement. Available county shared bonds will be used as a funding source of this project in lieu of the, using Murfreesboro City Schools' fund balance, as previously discussed. And we are happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this project.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Second?
I'll do it.
Ms. Moore, any questions?
Uh, when do we actually have a shovel in the ground?
I will again, uh, ask Mr. Barch to come up and discuss timeline with us.
We will have, uh, we've got a lot of meetings and a lot of city council things and, uh, you know, fire marshals, all kinds of things going on over the next several months. We hope to be breaking ground in early August, but, uh, talking with the architect, if we can get some, like, this is the first step, once we get going on this, if timelines and date lines fall in place, we might be able to knock off a month. So, late summer, the school calendar, late summer. And then it should be a calendar year for the build.
Okay.
Mr. Barch, would you mind, uh, talking just a little bit about what you and, uh, Ms. Hardeman, the principal, have already discussed as far as how the building will operate?
Yes, sir.
With this construction going on next year?
Uh, we have met with Larry Williford and Brandon, Brandon Richardson and Ms. Hardeman, uh, about a month ago. It was just before the break, and, uh, ironed out a plan for how we're going to operate for, during that course of the year, the construction. And we have an entrance that part of the construction and part of the agreement is going, like the bus-in, where they have the, the security set up for the front entrance, is going to move to a spot just to the left of the cafeteria and to the right of the gym. There's a door that has a reception area, and all that will be handled. There'll be some concrete added to create a slope, and it creates a, a small reception area that creates a, a, a safety, uh, space as well. And then as far as buses and car, car riders and ESP, that's all been worked out as well. It's just different locations.
So, there won't be any problem in operating during the school year with construction going on?
Uh, not to our knowledge. There might be some changes, just depending on, on what the, on the room that they need, but they're kind of getting used to it already with the air conditioning units going on and the, and the units that they have. and the, and the units that they have up front. It's going to be a similar location. Really, ultimately, what it's going to do is when you drive to the left and go off to the left of the campus as you're looking at it, that spot will be closed. But the loop on the back will still be where buses go. They can loop around and come back out again. It's just that one little dog leg there that will be closed off.
So it'll be worth the wait?
Definitely.
That's awesome.
Definitely.
And are we aware if we'll be using a similar, uh, safety, security tent on the windows that will exist in this new edifice?
Yes, sir. That's actually a state law. Whenever we do a, uh, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Rebuild.
Rebuild or, or a new building, that is a requirement of those windows for that, that spot.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
All right, you have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Approval of contract cooperative agreement for school specialty.
Yes, again, we're seeking to enter into a cooperative purchasing agreement with school specialty for the purchase of school furniture. As previously stated, state statute allows governments to participate in these agreements for the procurement of supplies and services. Um, and we are recommending approval of our joining of this cooperative agreement for furniture services and installation as needed.
I have a motion to approve the contract cooperative.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a discussion or question?
Is this for new, is, is somebody getting new furniture?
No, sir. It's when we purchase furniture, anything over $50,000. We have to do, I will say specifically with this purchase, with our $10,000 grant money for the tutoring program we've been doing, we had some grant money that we bought some additional kidney tables. We got additional chairs for that setup.
Okay.
So with that purchase aligned with ancillary purchases the schools may make throughout the year, it'll put us over that $50,000 threshold.
Okay. I was getting excited.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. Approval of stipends for qualified case manager.
Yes, as the board is, and we've had conversation on numerous occasions about our current challenges and successes in making sure that our buildings are staffed and making sure we have highly qualified educators in front of every student as a priority, we're bringing tonight a proposal regarding some current vacant positions we have. Currently, we have two vacant special education positions. And these positions are responsible for serving as special education caseload managers for students who have individualized education plans. We are recommending that qualified staff in the buildings where the vacancies occur, who take on the management of the additional caseloads until that vacant position is filled, receive a quarterly stipend to compensate them for the additional duties and federal requirements that they'll be overseeing. Currently, we're proposing a stipend of $1,200 per nine weeks for this work. And it is commensurate with what is provided for similar work in additional districts. Um, this is something that's been done in several districts around middle Tennessee. I am glad to say we haven't had to look at this until now. Uh, but it is something that we want to make sure, until we can get those positions filled, that we are honoring the time of those educators who are picking up those additional very important responsibilities.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
All right, thank you. Have a second.
Second.
All right. How many of these do you think we'll have? Will we have one per building?
No, right now we only have two in the district, and my hope is those are the only two we have. I know that both Ms. Johnson and our HR department and Ms. Fairchild and our Special Education Department are interviewing and looking for candidates on a regular basis. So my hope is these are the only ones that we have. We do know this time of year, because it is right in the middle of the school year, it is traditionally harder to find a, someone to, that's changing jobs in the middle of a school year. So there is the possibility that this position could be vacant until the end of this quarter or possibly the end of the school year.
All right, you have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposition? There is none. ESA resolution.
Yes, as the board has discussed, on November 28th of 2023, Governor Bill Lee proposed to expand Tennessee's current education savings account program through the state to allow approximately 20,000 K-12 students to use the voucher program to attend private or homeschool. The proposal currently referred to as the Education Freedom Scholarship Act would offer $7,075 annually for each participating student. A draft of the bill has not been published, and the final details of the legislation are undetermined at this time. However, with General Assembly going back in session today, I would expect we would see one very soon. At the board's direction, we have prepared a resolution that broadly opposes any state funding being appropriated for an education savings account program or similar voucher programs. Additionally, it specifies that if vouchers are approved, it's the desire of this board that they be accompanied by the same accountability standards that are required in public schools. If approved by the board, the resolution will be signed and delivered to the governor, the lieutenant governor, the speaker of the house, and every member of the General Assembly. And we are happy to answer any questions you may have. Ms. Bush drafted the resolution, so she will be happy to answer questions as well.
Any questions?
It's necessary.
Do we need a motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, sir. So moved.
Sign it.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, okay. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Suddles. Any question or comment?
Are the other districts doing the same, or do, I, I know they are. I guess I ask in a way of who all else is doing it.
Who hasn't?
Who has?
I don't have a specific list. I do know several districts have completed a similar resolution, but I, I don't have an exact list of who all, which districts have.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
In the opposition? And there is none. Ms. Suddles, you got that page?
I'm just passing it back now.
All right, sir. We don't want to lose it.
We definitely don't.
Approval of revenue and expenditure report?
Well, I get the honor of doing this. I told Mr. Owen, since this was day four on the job, and he didn't get to prepare this report, that I would present this. But your board packet tonight contains this month's financial report. This report is as of the end of November. So the major property tax collections still are not showing. We know those will come in after the beginning of the new year. I will tell you that the comparison report is showing that we are on track with where we were last year with both revenues and expenditures. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Now, we'll take it easy on you.
Nobody has a tough question?
Nah.
Surely we can come up with one.
I'm not, I, I'm not too worried. I got Beth and Daniel are back there. So I think between the three of us, we can answer anything.
We need a motion to approve the report. All, I have, we need a motion to approve the report. Ms. Moore, made the motion?
Second.
Ms. Dodd, say it. Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Thank you. Reports and information, enrollment report.
All right, we'll turn it over to Mr. Rocha.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good morning, sir.
Go ahead and pop up here the slides so you can see those. So this is a summary for period four. Um, this was from November 10th to December 14th. So it's been a few weeks with our break that we've had. Um, as you look at the top-left corner, you'll see that our average daily attendance has dropped just slightly by .04. Our current period, we have 10 fewer students. Uh, from the last period, we look at truancy, we have 75 students. Remember, that is the 10 unexcused days. That is 76 less students compared to last school year. Um, and a difference of 43 students from last period. So we're on good track so far with lower numbers and interventions that we've had in place. When you look at our chronic absentee rate, that is the 18 days. Uh, but for this period, we look at just the 10% of the period. And we have 12% of our students, and that is 1% from last period or 7% from last year. So we are on good track with those. Uh, slightly lower numbers for the PTRs based on some of those numbers that we look there as well. I have put together, so not to be confused, this includes a little bit past period four, um, and then also it has till the end of the school year. So you'll see those numbers just for a reminder. Um, we tend to be lower than last year with that uptick right at the last three days before we headed, before we headed for winter break. Any questions? I'd be happy to entertain.
Mr. Suddles?
I was going to ask, uh, well, the nurse is in here. Have we had bat flu stuff? I haven't heard anything.
I can't answer for certain, but I know that we've had a lot of different illnesses.
I didn't know if we've had any, because the attendance is looking really, really good. And I didn't know if we were past that, um, or if it's still coming up, or.
I, I haven't gotten a report from Nurse Garland yet or about that. So it hasn't, if there has been, it's not been significant enough that it's.
Right.
Like red flags are raised. I know over the winter holiday, there was a lot of illness. But unless Mr. Barch, she's reporting anything to you? Yes, I think we're, we're looking okay.
Because I would encourage all of our students, if they're going to have an illness, to do it during that winter break. I, it just makes.
They may disagree with you, but we appreciate that.
If they, if they have it during the winter break.
Well, and if they miss that, there's, there's spring break that comes up. That's another time to be ill. Just not during the, the regular time.
I'm not going to ask you what you had done. Thank you, sir. Very well. Much. Appreciate that report.
It is obvious that our schools are working hard to.
Yes.
Keep these numbers down because it's significant.
And if I can't add, and Mr. Rocha has, has done a great job working to help streamline that process and continue to look at ways to reduce those numbers. Although that chronic absenteeism is not part of our state accountability, it generates a letter grade, it is still part of our federal accountability because those are two separate systems now. It is still part of our federal accountability, that's something we have to monitor and watch. But at the end of the day, regardless of accountability, we know that when students are in schools, they do better, right? And so, uh, our schools are working hard. A lot of chronic absenteeism issues is something we try and work with parents to make sure we have the supports. And in fact, Mr. Rocha and I were in a meeting yesterday, and he, again, continued to reemphasize that it's about providing the supports we can to parents to make sure we get rid of those barriers. This is not a punitive model. It's about what can we do to help you get your child to school? Um, and I do believe, and I think our data continues to show that, that our schools can be proactive in helping to eliminate those barriers. And they've done a great job with it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Great.
Ken, Dr. Duke asked you about the flu, or David did. What about COVID? Seen any of that much anymore?
We're not tracking that. We don't track that at the school level.
Thank you. Good nutrition update.
I've asked Ms. Shealy to come and provide the board an update on a pretty substantial change that happened when students returned to school last, or Monday, yesterday. It's been just yesterday. It's been a busy two days. Um, but, uh, Ms. Shealy, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, we're pleased to announce that due to the federal government lowering the percentage rate that takes us to qualify for our community eligibility program, we are now allowed to offer no-cost meals to all of our students across the district. We started the program in 2015 when they first, the USDA first rolled it out. And we've, you're allowed to group schools together, have a school stand alone or a whole district. So we have taken part of that program since 2015. But they have lowered the percentage from 40% to 25%. So that allowed us to, to bring everybody together. And we announced that to parents before they came back. Um, we've already saw an increase in participation. So we're excited to be able to feed all of our children at no cost.
That's incredible.
Does that include staff?
No.
Unfortunately.
I'm sorry.
It should.
Not yet.
Not yet?
It should.
The smile on your face says it all. I think that, that's, that's great. Because I know, that is one of those things, uh, my other question has to do with, um, supply chain issues. We're doing much better, right?
I thought we were. For some reason, in November, we started going a little backwards. But we're, we're, we're better off than we were.
Okay, okay.
And we, so far, I've worked around. We haven't missed anything, so.
So we're still able to get milk?
We're, we're good. We did, we have not missed a beat on that.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. That's good news.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good.
Dr. Duke, it's all yours.
Uh, thank you. I just have a couple of quick announcements tonight for the director's update. First, Ms. Johnson's back. I want to congratulate her. She was selected to be on the Tennessee Department of Education's preparation.
I was looking for her. She's behind somebody. I couldn't.
Uh, this is a group of edu, a group of, a school district employees who were selected throughout the state to provide feedback and direction to the department to ensure that educators entering Tennessee classrooms are well-prepared to meet the needs of all students. We are thrilled to have Maria on that team. I think anytime we have MCS voices at the table, it matters. So it's going to be a little extra work for her, but I know she's up for the challenge. So wanted to say thank you for only applying, but congratulations for being selected to be on that team. Um, also, I want to remind the board that our next meeting, we don't have another formal board meeting here in January. Our next meeting is on January 27th. That is our retreat. It's a Saturday. It's our annual retreat. It'll be at the central office, and I know Ms. Van Cleve will be sending reminders out. Um, but we will have an agenda posted in the next few days, or next week, I should say, of the, that day's events.
All right, thank you. Uh, let me see that. When is our?
February?
Hall of Fame induction?
February 6th.
February 6th, so that will be before we be here again, won't it?
That will be, yes, sir.
I just want to remind people that is, that's a wonderful event. Can we announce who they are?
We can.
Our 2023-24 inductees into the Murfreesboro City School Hall of Fame, Ms. Sandra Parks, Ms. Mabel Pitterd, Mr. Ernest Victory, and Ms. Judy Beasley Whitehall, a Whitehill. So if you have an opportunity to see any of those, to congratulate.
Absolutely.
We'll have a wonderful induction ceremony February 6th.
It's going to be great. And we want to thank the committee that comes together and selects those every year. It's a, it was a great event last year, and we're excited to have another class this year.
All right, anything else come before this board tonight?
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, the school board members are required to file a statement of disclosure of interest with the Tennessee Ethics Commission by January 31st. And I wanted to remind everyone that that is coming up very quickly. The reporting form is available online and can be completed electronically or through a PDF form.
Thank you, ma'am. I got mine in the mail. My reminder, anyway. All right, nothing else? We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Thank you.